All right, everybody. All ready? Okay. Is everybody here that needs to be here? All right. It is 4:00 on Tuesday, May 23rd, and we will call the City Council, Curville City Council Workshop to order. And are there any public comments?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. We will start off with community project improvement update.
Mayor, Council, we've got almost 30 projects that are active or in some phase of planning and development or active construction. And so want to take this opportunity as we go into the summer season, particularly the budget season, to update you on where those various projects are at and provide an opportunity if you had any questions about the status of those projects.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
There we go. Say, have a little PowerPoint for you. Give you a brief overview with some pictures because those tend to say a little bit more than I do. Hit some of the highlight ones. We'll start by the funds. General Fund, we have the lowered Lois drainage. We mentioned it, take it easy. It's a whole slew of things. This one, you had the picture a few weeks ago. The original drainage channel, as you can see on this slide, was pretty corrosive in every storm event that we had, small and large. We haven't had too many significant ones to really look to see long term how this is going to do. But everything that we've had here recently has been doing exceptional within the improvements that we've done. This will stay on our books, just as FYI, for a little while. You'll see the 27 water main realignment is still tied in this project because TechStop has the culvert improvements to do on that.
Any word?
So that's the second bullet point. The TechStop project will not commence until we get our sewer out of the way. We're going to do a joint bid with the water main, but the sewer, that's part of the NAP project that we had. I'll talk a little bit more about that. But TechStop will not even commence their procurement process for their project until we're done and out of the way on the sewer. They don't want any hangups for change orders of delays. And I understand that it's a long project. But that's also contingent upon, I believe Windstream is the other one that is going to be delayed a little bit. So that actually helps Windstream with our sewer project. We're looking probably about October, November, being out of the way with that NAP sewer project. Get them started on the procurement of their contractors. Get that construction hopefully scheduled for the first part of '24. So Westminster, I think you might have heard a little bit about this project. We've been working on utilities. One of the things that a lot of people have been asking is how we're going to sequence this. If you look, you can kind of see this is just a brief snapshot of East Main, north to First Street. First Street being down on the bottom of the picture on the left. What you see on the right is what we're actually putting in. That's antiquated, very, very shallow utilities in there. And unfortunately, with the existing utilities, we had to go in shallow again. But we're putting more structure on top of it this time. That has been handled pretty well during the rain events that we've had. So what they'll do, they're working on the East Main to Lang portion right now in the utilities. Here in a couple of weeks, they're going to go in and once they get tested out on the East Main to First, and so the north, if we split it, Curville north, they're going to pave that one before they pave the whole thing down to Lang. So they'll continue working on the Lang utilities, or East Main to Lang, and then they'll pave the upper portion so we can get that back open again.
Any date?
For the paving?
Completion?
Of completion, we're looking at September, October timeframe. That's conservative based on the rain patterns that we're seeing right now. The utility contractor can be done about June. Once we get done with that, then we'll have about 30-day grace period that we go through for testing and whatnot. And then August, September, we could potentially be paving that southern portion. There's some other items that have to be done in conjunction with that, but for the most part, we could be done as early as September. But what we're saying is more of the October timeframe. Big push is to try to get done as much as possible before school starts back up in August. You recently saw the request for tourist funding on this. So just a recap of what we're doing in the downtown segment. You know, the picture on the left is a CDBG, the Community Development Block Grant project. That was the base bid that council awarded. And that contractor, we're scheduling a pre-con for the first part of next month. A lot of that work really won't be done for probably about six, eight months because of the lead time on materials. So you won't see anything for a little while on this one. And then when you do, it's just going to be over with, you know, in an instant kind of thing. They'll come out, just do similar to what TechStop's been doing around town with the traffic signals. The picture on the right, I believe confirmation from TERS is coming to you this evening for the funding. This is going to be for the intersection at Water and Clay, putting in the sidewalk ramps to the Heritage Center location in Vocals Building to allow more access to the parking garage. That's also going to be in conjunction with KPU Underground Utilities. They are scheduled to start June 5th. So we're working with KPU on closure of Water Street to help expedite that process. Don't want them to have that street closed anywhere close to July 4th. So Mike and his crew are doing really well coordinating that effort. And once we know more, we'll make sure that everybody's well aware. We're going to have it signaled with signboards at least two weeks in advance is our intention. Like I said, hopefully, we can start on that as soon as possible. If not, it'll be after the 4th.
And a timeframe on that? I mean, we're not anywhere near close to the eclipse. This will all be done before then?
Correct. Yeah, I believe he has a three-month time period is when they expect to be done. And like I said, the lane closure is about 10 to 12 days. Or let me rephrase that. The road closure is about 10 to 12 days. So that will be a little bit of a nuisance for those who try to use Water Street on a daily basis. Will have to go up to East Main or to Main Street. And that's for through traffic. So going to the print shop, you'll still be able to do that. Okay, River Trail Downtown. So design is about 90% complete. Again, that's just giving you an overview of the total from G Street to the library. This segment was just the pavilion to library. Right now, we're in the easement acquisition phase. We have not received, I guess we've seen the 90% plans, but we're not going to proceed with that until we receive all easements. That way, we're not battling through easement acquisition with a contractor on board. Again, kind of similar to the TechStop discussion with delay charges. We want to make sure that we've got everything. Then we bring it to you for recommendation of a word for construction.
Are you having any, running into any hurdles with getting easements?
So we have Malcolm Matthews contracted to do a lot of those. He's been coordinating a lot of the efforts. Some of this stuff is just, in exchange of an easement, I'd like to have this. We don't really have anything contentious at this point. All right, just a quick overview because we will bring something much larger, I think about the September, October timeframe when we recap our paving season. In addition to that top point there is the pavement management plan. The data has been collected. Right now, what they're doing is they're going through their process of identifying all the cracks and failures within our streets. And first part, first to middle part of next month, they're going to bring back the initial run at a few pilot streets for us to say, okay, this is how Curville does. So what I did is you'll see in the top right, RAS is the sub consultant on this. Historically, we've used Fugro for the first two or three. We went with a different consultant because they basically have the same, they have the same van. We weren't really getting the customer service that we wanted with Fugro. This company came in very well recommended that they do deliver and correspond with city staff. So like I said, the first part of June, we'll start seeing that initial blush of compiled data for us to start looking at the tenure plan. The base repair and crack seal, slurry seal, mill and overlay list are all stemming from that plan. We will be bringing a base repair and crack seal contract to you guys probably June, July, middle summer for the FY 23 list. And then slurry seal right behind that. The mill and overlay streets department, I don't know if you've seen the closures. They're out there actively going forward with a lot of their work already. Like I said, we'll have more when we bring the new plan forward to you for adoption. Yes, sir.
The work on West Lane's great. Thank you all.
And I think, do you have anything to mention about yours? I didn't ask you. So we'll skip to the water sewer fund now. That's all the general fund projects I had. Actually, I guess before, do you have any other questions on those that I've presented so far? So now we get into the water sewer. This is the NAP lift station alignment. It has not started yet. We're still in the material procurement phase. Actually works well for the contractor. This is the same contractor that's doing the Water Street water line project, and they're getting close to wrapping that one up. So as the materials coming in, we're looking for staging areas. The key I wanted to highlight on this one is this is the remaining Legion lift station funding that we have for that project. This is the one that we injected, I think, probably 2/3 of the construction cost of that one was Waterville Board funded. So that will use the remaining Legion lift station funds. I've got the route on here, but basically it's Walmart to Jefferson Lift Station at Town Creek by CBS.
Did you say they already started?
Their time has started, but it's in the material procurement stage. So you haven't seen any construction yet.
Okay, thank you.
That should be in about a month is what we're, within a month, I should say.
Okay.
And that shouldn't disturb a lot of things, should it?
There's going to be various lane closures because the route does go, I don't know how easy it is to, let me see if I can remember how to zoom in on this thing. Let's see, that does not, okay. So yeah, it's a little blurry. But if you look, I don't know if I'm going to try to be fancy here with this thing. Yeah, it's not going to do it. So this area, I don't know how well you can see that, the red, is West Main. So we're going to come out by Autozone, out of the creek, and run down West Main and then get to Center. So as we're going down West Main, we're going to be, the road's going to be closed because we're going to be right in the middle of it. So that one's relatively easy because we'll just have it closed in small sections as they proceed with the work. Once we get down to Center and I think it's Florence, and then to Woodlawn, those are going to be a little bit bigger if an issue, at least for the residents on Florence, because there's not really a route in and out. The contractor will make accommodations, usually steel plates, to make sure that they can get to their houses and stuff. Woodlawn's just a heavily traveled road. And then we get on Lois and run all the way to Commerce out by Walmart. Same thing, we're going to have various closures that are moving along. So it'll be probably weekly, bi-weekly updates that will get with Stuart Cunias in issue, give folks updates.
But in the summer, that without school traffic, that will be a little bit better for those areas?
Yes, that's what we're hoping for. Again, so this is the project, let me kind of get it roughly about right here. That's about where that drainage crossing is. So there's a little stem that comes off of this. It's hard to see on this one. That is the requirement for TechStop. We have to get to this point, that's a requirement before TechStop will do the 27 culverts. All right. I think I'm still on the, okay. Okay, so this is an update of one that's been on here for a while that we're glad to see wrapping up. This was the October 18 flood, the damaged utility bridge. We received full 100% grant funding from Water Development Board Emergency Declaration. We have scheduled for this Thursday a final inspection by the Water Development Board staff. This project has been done. Utilities are functioning. Gives you an idea of what equipment it took and why it was a little specialized. These trucks came from North Carolina to do some of this work. So not anything just a regular contractors can do. But again, we had delays of about a year on materials. And then just getting through the whole Water Development Board process and making sure that every I was dotted, T crossed, we've got it in functioning, so.
Is there any final inspection by somebody that says this is all good?
So the city has already done the final inspection. The one that I mentioned with the Water Development Board, yes. That's going to be the all-clear, write it off here. We can issue retainage. So right now, we're just withholding retainage. They've submitted out, they, being finance, has submitted outlays for the work that's been done to date. But we cannot do the final closeout until their staff comes in and looks at the site.
Is that date still the same for the final inspection, in two days? That's what we have on our list here, May 25th?
Yes, yes. That's Thursday, right? I was trying to do the math. I didn't put May 25th because I thought, okay, well, Thursday sounds better. But yes, that's for Thursday. And we, pending rain, we fully expect them to be here then.
Where do you see May 25th? I see May 2023. I don't see May 20.
On number, line 11?
I see, okay, okay.
So Water Street Water Line, again, I mentioned the contractor is the same one doing the NAP. They are nearly complete with this project. And I am thankful for the timing because it has worked out much better than what we expected. This one, again, goes from Washington to Tybee. We had a lot of tuberculation in line. Found out that we had about half the capacity going through that line. And this is, if you recall from our water master plan update, part of the recommendation was to get rid of some lines throughout the city. I think it was about $200,000 a year. This is a prime example of why. We replaced the existing 6-inch tuberculated line with a 10-inch to increase capacity. There's potential hotel, come in, and various other components along the way in addition to what UTC is doing. This is just a capital project that we presented. So that one's wrapping up. So some other upcoming projects that the design has been awarded in even some of the constructions. An update on the Lois tank is the remaining THM funds. So that's the tri-halo methane project that we did with the filters out at the water plant. The remaining funds, we've received approval from the Water Development Board to use those for the construction of a new tank. With that, we've split the Methodist improvements separate from Lois tank. They're working parallel, same design contract, but there's going to be a time period that's going to be a substantial gap. The blending plan has been submitted to TCQ. Basically, what that is, is blending the water that comes out of the Lois tank and well from the water treatment plant up to that Methodist well that right now is only being used for emergency. We're going to inject that into the tank for blending. And the hope is, as soon as we get that approval, getting that done. The Lois tank, now that we've received Water Development Board funding, is going to have delays because we're going to have to bring an environmental component to it. It's an existing site. There's not going to be much to it. But unfortunately, we have to go through the red tape and get their approval from the environmental status. It's going to be on the same side as the existing tank, going in with the new. And then.
What's the timeline on that? I'm sorry.
Usually, what we've been seeing is about six months.
Do we think by next year, we'll have a new tank at Lois, or not?
Sorry, that's just for the environmental. The tank itself is.
But a new tank at Lois within a year?
I would say a 10 to 12-month project. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
H Street well, that's the rehab of the existing well that's out there. We had the holes in the casing. That contractor believe is going to schedule, it said, end of this week, possible mobilization. So first, basically what I've been saying is first part of June, they're going to start the construction of that one. And getting to some of the revenue bonds that you've recently passed. The first two that you've seen is the FUB. This one, I think, was a smaller contract. John Hewitt, Hewitt Engineering is the design engineer on this one. We will go out to bid next month or two. Once we finalize design, it's about 75 to 90%. That's the picture on the left. I'm not sure why I got rotated, but you can see the lot of corrosion in those pipes. That's the one that the staff is currently bypassing. Yes, sir.
Sorry, I missed what you said. 75 to 90% for what?
Complete design.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, go ahead.
And so the, like I said, the bypass, actually the pipe that you see stuck down the hole with the blue stripe on it, that's part of their bypass pump. This lift station is not functional. So we're trying to get this one going as quick as possible. Clarifier 3 rehab, that one's still about six to eight months away from design completion. Then, kind of like I mentioned with the traffic signal, a lot of that's going to be material procurement. We're going to sit for probably eight to 10 months, and then material's going to come in. And the contractor will mobilize to the site and change out all the components, as you see here, as well as some of the arms. That's the first two that we have on the docket for revenue bonds. And I think we'll probably, throughout the year, as we have a little capacity on a staff level, be bring more to you based on the rankings that public work staff has.
Remind me where the lift station is on this slide.
So that is, as soon as you go into the gates at the wastewater plant, there is, basically it looks like a big lagoon that just sits there. There's a scale that the haulers come, it's just to the left.
This lift station's at the treatment?
At the treatment plant, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Got a lot going.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you elaborate a little bit more on next page 22, the airport hanger improvement?
That one, I will divert to Mr. Horns. Good afternoon. So the airport hanger project is, they have three of the four box hangers doors on. So the fourth door is, as of the last meeting, they're still waiting on that door. So it could very well be there. I'll have more tomorrow so I can get some photos and send that out to y'all. And the site work that the EIC funded is mostly complete. They've got some drainage basins, drainage channels that they created between the box hangers and the site work that they funded. And then the site work is all pretty well ready. And they've got quite a few, they have lists of people who are interested in building on those pad sites. So there's a lot of interest in it. There's a pretty big waiting list at the airport for hanger space. And so it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be any time at all before that's already taken up. And they'll have more to provide for y'all at the annual meeting on the 7th as well.
Thank you.
Michael, would you, I ask, would you update council as well on where we're at with the public safety facility planning process? And you've got tours lined up?
Absolutely. So we are, we've gotten through the first phase of the contract with Burn Construction on 30% schematic design. And several of the staff members will be heading up to the DFW area along with Burn and their architects to look at a couple of facilities and just kind of, you know, what do you see here? What went well, what went bad? What do you like? And then they'll come back to us and we'll go, okay, let's temper that expectation on this thing. That was built eight years ago before inflation. But it gives Burn and their designers some time with staff to kind of understand what their needs are and kind of reassess the assessment that we did a while back. If you recall, the chief of police wasn't a part of that. And so you want to make sure you have the same, you know, it's a new set of eyes. It's the police chief that's going to be in charge of that facility. And so really want to get them to have eyes on that. So we're doing really well. We've had some really good discussions. We had eight hours worth of meetings thus far with their design team and the contractors. And so it's been real productive thus far. Really looking forward to getting that project, moving further down the line, bringing more updates to you.
When are you going to the DFW area?
So I'm not exactly sure who's all committed at this point. I'm not going to be able to go. But I'm going to be in Allen the following week for the week. And so I'm going to try and hit up all those city managers and just ask them to let me go tour it separately. But I believe it's the Tuesday through Thursday after Memorial Day next week. So we'll have a few of the staff out there.
Who's going, do you know?
I think both chiefs are going to head out. I think we're going to have Charby, and we were trying to get somebody from court to go out, right? So we've got the municipal court, public safety facility, fire administration, NIT. So those are kind of the big four that we want to have go out there, schedules permitting. I think that's part of the issue.
And do we have a time for the sewer yet?
I'll turn that back over to you. I don't know when that sewer's planning on being done exactly. But we are planning to meet our deadlines for that to be done and the other to get started.
So we had a quick little meeting this morning with that contractor. They're going to start early next month. And then we will be done well in advance of the anticipated start date. Right now, we're looking at kind of mid-August. That gets testing and everything out of the way. Like Michael said, more in the September timeframe for the building itself, once we get design going. But the wastewater itself will be done. I say late summer, but you've got to remember, summer goes a little bit further. So we'll just say mid to late August.
I have a question about number 23, the Calhoun Theater.
I do too.
Improvements? Go ahead, ma'am.
No, I just wanted to know if you could give us an update on that, the Calhoun.
On which?
23.
Number 23?
We've had an assessment completed from Peter Lewis and his team of subcontractors, both from an HVAC side as well as a roofing side. We've got some preliminary estimates on that. It's one of the conversations that we want to have with council over the course of the summer to discuss funding sources and which avenues you'd like us to pursue.
Like maybe some grant opportunities? Because it's just getting worse every day over there. And with summer coming up, you know, I mean, it's going to impact people's, you know, wanting to be in that building for theater or presentations if the HVAC is not working. So, I mean, can we look at maybe some grant opportunities or something for that since it's such a huge cost?
We're looking at all avenues, funding possibilities there. Certainly, those are discussions we want to have with you over the summer to see how you all may want to leverage different potential resources. But you're right, it's that those, both of those systems are at the end of their useful life, and they're going to have to be replaced in the near term.
Okay, council, any other questions? All right, thank you, Kyle. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to look at how we're going to pay for all these things, right?
At least the process.
How's everyone today?
How are you, Julie?
I'll try to be entertaining and not boring, although I know this is everyone's favorite topic by far. We thought it would be interesting, we've done this a couple of times internally with our Leadership Academy in a little bit different format, and then with our, just different leadership groups, just to kind of describe what the budget process looks like in total, start to finish. So we bring it to you kind of at a summary level most of the time. Some of you may understand every piece of this, and that's great if you do. But if not, and we can provide some information now that may help us through the budget workshops in the summer, and then any questions or how to address any questions or concerns or bring comments or ideas to us. We want to do that. So that's what we'll do today. Again, with this thing, I'm going to use this. So I'm not going to go over all these, but this is our budget calendar internal. The message here is we never stop working on the budget. So as soon as we're closing one year, we're already started on the other before we're really even into audit. And we've talked about this a few times, but we've really brought this budget team together this past year and took a really deep look at assets in general, overall assets, rolling stock, equipment. We're still in the midst of kind of determining facility assets as far as maintenance liabilities and those kinds of things. But we feel like we're really making really good progress with the team that we've built and just taking a little bit different approach to that. And we'll be bringing you a lot more information on that here in the next month as far as what our findings are and just kind of working off the tenure plan that you've seen before on rolling stock, just building that same basic idea out citywide. So really in February, we start working on salaries, budgets, estimations, group insurance, those kinds of things that are big ticket items and working through those. And then in March, really start looking at operational needs and we come, I'll go through that process with you a little bit. Preliminary role, you know, we always wait on that. However, this is a tool that we use, so we don't get our certified role until July 25th or thereabout. Last year, we got it a few days early. So we have about five or six days to kind of work through what our certified role is to get us to what our tax rate is. And so we'll talk through that a little bit too. So.
That's the certified property tax role that comes from the appraisal district, which is an independent body completely separate from the city.
The last thing in December, what you know, is that we apply for the distinguished budget presentation award. So this guidelines for this award and the way we present our budget document is set by GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association. So we have to meet those guidelines as the way we present our budget in order to receive that award with the idea being that we're presenting a transparent document that's somewhat easy to read and user friendly. We talked about the PAFR when we brought that out a few months ago. Our hope is to bring something similar to the budget so that we can kind of consolidate that into a way that someone can see a high level version and then dig where they want to dig instead of having so much to go through. So that's one of our goals in our department. So moving forward just to the process, so the budget process as a whole is governed by state law and also by our charter and then internal policies that are set by council. So each one of these things relating to when we publish things in the paper, when we publish the actual document, when we can adopt and what those timeframes are, along with how we calculate property tax rate and what gets submitted. And this budget amendments are all governed within those two basic rule sets. However, we do have internal policies that we use to guide that too. So it's not unusual, as you probably know, to see a budget amendment in the current year for something that related to the prior year because of just closeout of year and things like that. It's a little bit cleaner to let the whole year closeout before we bring final numbers instead of using estimates. So we talk about fund balance an awful lot. So we talk about things, acronyms and all kinds of things sometimes that we have to slow down and say, we know what that is, does everyone else know what that is? And so fund balance essentially is unrestricted dollars. So it's, it's cash or an equivalent that we can utilize in the event of an emergency. So in our financial management policy, we have fund balance requirements for the general fund and the water fund. GFOA requires 15% or recommends, I should say, a 15% fund balance. Our policy states that we should have between a 15 and 25% fund balance. We try to stay up there really close to 25% on both funds as we, as we can. Keep in mind that general fund is 25% of expenses. Water fund is 25% of cash and cash receivables. So things, whether we have the cash or we expect to receive the cash is calculated a little bit differently. So that can get a little tricky when you're forecasting on the water fund because you're not just forecasting revenues and expenses, but you're also forecasting cash on hand and then receivables and what those two things look like together. So it's really important that we keep a close eye on fund balance year over year. And so it's okay for us to draw down fund balance if we have too much. That's actually encouraged because then we can utilize that money for something that we would have potentially budgeted for. However, our policy specifically says that with very few exceptions, fund balance drawdown can only be used for one-time expenses. So we wouldn't want to say, well, we're $200,000 short on the budget, so we're going to take $200,000 out of fund balance to balance that. That's not an option for us. So there's very few exceptions to that. Part of our audit requires us to disclose any fund balance drawdown. So if we have a negative fund balance in any way throughout the year, we have to provide that to the auditor with the backup, showing how that was utilized exactly in accordance with our policy and GFOA and with council approval. So there's a lot of steps to making sure that we're, we're doing that the correct way. Five-year forecast, I'm showing you this picture from the water fund basically because we just talked about this and so it should look familiar. It's an ongoing process, so we talk every month in our monthly council reports for finances about monitoring and how we're aligning things with the budget to make sure that we're staying on track with, was, is the percentage that we actually budgeted, is that lining up? Was there something unusual going on? And just monitoring this, not just month over month, but year over year and then comparing it out to historical data, which I'll show you just a little bit of. But this really helps us with budgeting if we're monitoring throughout the year and we know what's happening. It just kind of becomes second nature to estimations because we already see what's happening and the trends are there and we're working in them every day. It helps us monitor fund balance requirements, as we said, when we do projections out, we can see how if expenses grow or revenues increase or vice versa, what is the impact on the overall fund balance? And so how are we maintaining that not just today and next year, but five years from now? And so we don't want to do something today that's going to create a shortfall in fund balance five years from now. So when we're looking at large expenses, we have to keep that in mind. Again, we can draw down fund balance on council approval, but just not for recurring. And notice, and we talked about this in forecasting where it says operating transfers out. I think in years past, this has kind of been lumped so that you can see operating transfers out as a lump, but we broke them out for forecasting for us, for one, and then also for transparency. So you can see really where money's going when it leaves the fund. So it gets a little confusing in the water fund because water fund debt service also comes into the water fund. So the transfer is in the same fund, but because we locate it somewhere else, it's just for transparency. So we're just going to try to do a better job of outlining that in a way that people know what money is going where and for what. So looking at estimating revenues and kind of how we do that, though, this top report is what you see every month. We utilize this a lot. You see a summary form of it. Of course, keep in mind, the general fund has 210 revenue accounts that we look at. Obviously, we look at the ones that are the majority first. Some of the ones that are small, you know, don't get as much attention, but we still look at them as a total. When I tell you every month how something compares to year-to-date estimate, the information in this bottom chart isn't as important as the message. And that is that we use a five-year historical calculation to say, every October, we have collected X percent of X revenue. And so that's how I bring to you where we should be at that point in time, just based on history. So when we were in COVID, we would remove things that were unusual or abnormal or make adjustments for that or skip that year if it was something really big and then bring in another year for that average. So that we're kind of staying on track is, are we doing better than budget? Are we not doing as well as we should be in budget? And how do we adjust to make sure that we stay within the confines of the budget that we have? So the tool that we use regularly and then also we talk a lot about how things line up to how we budget. So every month, it, what percentage of property tax revenues have we collected and how does that look to the total? Is that lining up with the way we budget it or not? And if it isn't, then why? And so just tools that we use throughout the month to just maintain what we're doing and then also to project as we move forward. Our favorite topic, probably our hottest topic right now, just because it's such a question mark. So 30% of our overall general fund revenue comes from sales tax. So because it's very volatile, because it is a very non-stable source of revenue, we track it. We watch it really closely. We have probably 5,000 or 6,000 different taxpayers that we receive sales tax revenue from and over a certain amount, they report, we see them in detail to the controller. And so we analyze those down to people who pay $2,000 and up every month and looking at what's the change from this year to last year and how does that look from prior years? And did someone go out of business? Do we have a new business? And so really just tracking all those things that drive our sales tax. So remember, sales tax is collected two months after the purchase actually happens. So that's real important when we're looking at trends because things like Christmas and back to school and those things where we don't receive August sales tax for back to school until October. So when it looks like October is really a high month, it's really from August sales. So all those things are important when we're really tracking how money comes in. And again, the, the chart at the bottom, it's really less about the information, just kind of to show you a tool that we use. So calculating basically what is our budget? Where should we be within our budget based on that historical percentage that we've calculated over the last five years? If we should be at 9.8% of our budget by this point, but we're at 12.9, well, that's great, but why? Did we have some sort of anomaly that's driving that or are we just having a great sales tax trend? And so that's why we track that 12-month rolling average too, just to kind of see if we get a large future payment one month that really skews the percentage and then we don't get it the next month, so now you have a low percentage. But what is overall, what's 12 months look like and, and how are we trending on the total? So take a good look at that every month. And then also monitoring economic development that's coming, potential growth, matching those up with looking at like water fund accounts to see what that growth percent is and just a lot of factors that determine why people, you know, shop here. Couple of fun facts for sales tax. I sent these to EA, I think, a couple of months ago. I think they're interesting. I don't know if other people do, but so three states or four states, only Delaware, Montana, New Hampshire and Oregon do not have a sales tax. So I thought that was very interesting. However, their cities can still levy one if they want to. I'm not exactly sure how they manage that, but these guys are called nomad states and so no sales tax. 12 states only have origination-based sales tax law. So this is a big controversy right now if you're following any legislative stuff going on. Texas is an origination-based sales tax state. Why that's important is because when you have a local vendor who manufactures something, let's just say, and they ship it to another state, an origin, an origin-based sales tax keeps the sales tax. So a destination-based sales tax does not. And so all destination-based sales tax states have to send the money where the product goes. And so when you have a large manufacturing community, that can really be hurtful, especially if there are agreements in place, you know, for whatever reason. And some, some larger cities that have bigger manufacturing situations than we do would be impacted a lot. But that's a big controversy right now in the legislative session. There's been several suggestions on changing from, from origination to destination-based in Texas over the past, what, five years or more? And it, it keeps failing because they can't settle on what exactly does that look like? So, but it is, it's a really hot topic and we track that a lot because if that were to change, that would have a big impact on our sales tax overall. So anyway, just some facts there on sales tax. So we do get some online sales from other cities who are destination-based, so marketplace-type vendors, Amazon, you know, depending on what the company is and those kinds of things. So we do see some online stuff from other states who have destination-based sourcing. So it's a little different and I think that's why the controversy, because they want to make it consistent, but because it would be such a change for some communities, it just can't seem to, to get hold, so. Okay, property tax. So we're going to talk a little bit about this, but if anyone would ever like to talk about property tax offline, I'm happy to do that. It's a huge topic with a lot of different variations. And so I don't care how long we spend, we could never cover it all and I don't know it all. So we, you know, we do the best we can. We use our resources. That's why there are rules in place with who does what. And so we follow the bounds of our rules and, and make sure that we do it correctly. So Kirkad, again, as EA said, determines property values. They apply any exemptions. Any of those kinds of things come directly from Kirkad. They do have an internal review board that is appointed by taxing entities essentially that manage that protest process. I'm not sure how many is on that review board, seven or eight? There's quite a few that actually will hear any protests to evaluations. They produce a certified role for us that, that has to be to us by July 25th of each year. And again, that gives us a really tight window and you've seen it change just within a few days based on what we received throughout the updates for the preliminary roles to the actual certified role. So before they can produce a certified role, they have to be 95% certified. So with that being said, depending on, you know, who the 5% that are uncertified are and the value, you know, that, that can change. Not significantly because only 5%, but you know, we still have a few things in litigation right now from last year's role. So when that happens and if, you know, the, the lawsuit comes out in favor of the taxpayer, then we potentially have to refund back the property taxes paid. So a lot of just different little nuances to property tax, really that protects the taxpayer in a lot of ways. So once we get a certified role, the Kerr County Tax Assessor Collector, he calculates the no new revenue rate as well as our voter approval rate and produces that tax worksheet that's in the back of our budget document. And it's probably 20 pages, give or take, that takes a couple of years of history and rolls things forward based on what our evaluations are, what changes are, what our current debt is, some fund balance information that we have to submit to him and some other things. And then once all that's finished, then we can kind of settle in and start proposing some property tax rates, which we try to do that throughout the budget process. But again, we really can't get anywhere solid on something until we really see what those final certified roles come in. So by law, debt has to be paid first, so that rate always comes off first. And I'm sure that you know, but our policy says that 25%, our debt rate cannot exceed 25% of our total property tax rate. So that, we stay within that. So we talked about most of this, this is just really more for information. The main thing is to know that no new revenue, the no new revenue rate is basically an apples-to-apples comparison of this year's properties compared to the same exact properties last year. So if someone goes out and remodels their home and they have a valuation change, then they're not part of the no new revenue rate calculation anymore. So same exact properties last year to same exact properties this year, dollar for dollar, a no new revenue, new rate would mean we're not calc, not collecting any more on those properties than we did from one year to the next. So once that's established, we are limited to a 3.5% on the maintenance and operations side increase on the property tax rate over the no new revenue rate without an election. So it's never gone to election, although Senate Bill 2 came out in 2019, there were a lot of changes within that law. So, and that's where the 3.5% came from. That doesn't apply to the debt rate because that is set. The only time that would apply is if by city policy, we were exceeding that rate and then have to go to election, which is what we did. This is just some information and I've showed you this several times, I'm just looking at historical property rate year over year revenues. This gives you general fund and debt fund revenue and then also looking at the rate. So the tax rate is naturally going to reduce as values go up just because of the way Senate Bill 2 is written. So if values go up, then the rate is naturally going to adjust down because we're collecting more dollars or we have more value to collect dollars on, if that makes sense. So the city's tax rate remained the same or reduced from 2010 all the way to 2022 with the increase this past year, of course, being due to the GO bonds that were approved by voters. And then there's just a little calculation of property tax rate. Basically, all it is, I guess in a nutshell, is the adjusted value divided by 100 multiplied times the tax rate. So debt rate comes out of there first and whatever is left is the general fund property tax. And then you have TERS to consider and a few other things in there that come into play there. So estimating revenue in the water fund, a little bit different. We've talked a lot about this, so I really encourage anyone who has a bigger interest to go back to that February workshop and walk through that water forecasting. Big thing to remember here is 97% of our revenue in the water fund comes from consumption-based rates. So it is important that we are tracking who's consuming what and at what tier because the less water you use, the lower your rate is going to be. And so just a little snip there of just kind of how it looks when we pull it together every month by the type of user and then also by the amount within the tiers that we have designed by rates. And so basically using this application, we can calculate out where we feel like water revenues are going to land, just using, you know, historical data, current data and a mix of, of all of the above. But revenues by service category, that's important. Base charge to water use is important and we've talked about the base charge being a stable revenue versus the water portion of the bill being a volatile revenue just because rainfall and we've all seen that in the last year. Extreme drought, you would think people use more water, but really everyone's been really good and so they've actually used less water. So it, it can go either way. Do you go into extreme conservation or do you say my grass was green and now it's not raining, so I'm going to go ahead and use more water? So it, it really is, it's really customer-driven on how that works. So, so anyway, just gave you a chart there of water revenue distribution and how we kind of track. We try to stay, you know, within a percent or two of this water and sewer split, keeping in mind that we readjust sewer rates every April based on usage. And so we continue to tell that to customers, especially new customers that come into the water office, to tell them during this time is our period of sewer rate averaging. So, you know, really discourage them from water and grass and those kinds of things during those periods of time because it helps their overall sewer rate. Our sewer rate for 23 was almost flat with 22. So that's, it, it varies a little bit, you know, by thousand gallons or so, but it's usually not a big variation because our customer base doesn't change much. Now, if we were to get, you know, a large residential units or something like that, then we could see that change potentially. This is just an updated rainfall chart. I haven't brought this to you in a little while. I didn't look at the overall inches change. I mean, I heard on the news this morning, we have 11 inches or something this year compared to, that was our total for last year. So that was encouraging. I don't, I'm not seeing signs that we're going to all of a sudden magically be out of a drought. However, the rain was nice on Sunday, I know that. So our water system is very expensive to operate and we've talked about that quite a bit. And so it's important that we're forecasting revenues correctly so that we're being able to sustain the level of service that our customers require. So I kind of grouped estimating expenses and there are always differences within funds, but we really rely heavily on departmental input for operational budgets. So they're their own experts in their own departments and so we expect them to know what they need to operate and we give them all of the data that's at their fingertips every day. So they're using it to be able to tell us, this is really what we need. If there's anything out of the ordinary for operations, it's not your normal operation stuff, then we have those discussions. And we have constant conversation with, with departments, myself and Trina through the finance department and as well as our city administration, really constantly from February on relating to, do we need new full-time employees? Do we need a part-time employee? Do we need some new piece of equipment or those kinds of things? So it's really big if you look at it from a big, but if you really dissect it and look at a departmental level, they know what they're doing and, and they're managing their operations. And so we're looking at them in kind of one-off situations, so it makes it look a little easier when we're breaking it down into that level of detail. But we're going to look at what's realistic because, you know, you have wants and needs. But we're looking at what's realistic because, you know, you have wants and needs. And so, anybody who's ever, you know, run a department or a business knows there's definitely a want and definitely a need. And so, sometimes the wants enhance your business and so we really have to consider, you know, what's going to be the long-term gain of the wants and then what's the needs and how do we make sure to take care of those first? So, what's true? So, using historical data, super important. Our finance system goes back to 2014 in detail, all the way down to the invoice. So, if anyone says, well, what was that? Well, they can just drill down and find it. So, all the tools are there and they know how to use them. So, I have a lot of confidence in what our departments put forth and especially looking at '23's, a lot of detail goes into those budgets. What are our future needs? How's our current budget doing to our, you know, activity to our budget? Last year, super volatile, right? We didn't know from one month to next, really hard to even predict, let alone, just doing the tracking was a lot, let alone, you know, forecasting when you have inflation numbers that are crazy and gas numbers that are crazy. So, '23's budget, you know, we had a lot of conversations about what's inflation going to do. You know, it's a guessing game kind of at the end of the day. What are economists saying? Are they right? So, and then so really, is using historical data a good choice? Sometimes it's not, like we talked about with COVID. Sometimes you just have to say, we're going to scrap that because that's not good information. We got to find something that's more relevant to what we're doing and then use that as our basis, so. And then, other expenses, you know, capital improvements, council priorities, asset needs, which we'll continue to talk about in a lot more detail. So, this is just an example and whoops, this is actually Trina's. So, this is just an example of just a tool we use. This is what our actual budget report looks like when we run it in-house. And so, when we're working through the budget process, we put notes in. So, we can backtrack and say, now, what did I, what was I thinking when I did that? Or what basis did I use or where's that report filed? Or, you know, what's my support for that? And so, every expense line within a department's budget comes back in this level of detail. So, if it's the water production plant, for example, they're telling us how many gallons of X chemical that they anticipate buying. So, there's a lot of thought that goes into these departmental budgets before it ever gets back to us. And then, we work through that with them, look at any variances. We go down into each line item and look and compare, okay, they need this, but did they do buy that the last two years or is this something new? And so, we have ways to identify new items that the departments let us know, hey, you're not going to see this in historical, this is something new we're adding because whatever the reason. So, these are really important when we're working through that because it gives us some tools to work through it on our own, then ask questions back at the departments and then meet with them. So that when we, by the time we bring it to city administration, we've worked through a lot of those details and by the time we bring it to you, we've worked through a whole lot more of those details. So, we're giving you a summary version. Just know this information is there. So, if you ever say, well, 10% increase, what's that about? We have that information and I can promise you, we've worked through it at this level of detail to get where we are. And we have the confidence, Senator, we wouldn't bring it to you in the first place, so. Other things when we're estimating expenses, I remember you saw this a lot last year. This is last year to this year laying side-by-side, so you can see why some things that are big-ticket items like fuel are so hard to predict when you have that kind of a fluctuation. That's looking at San Antonio, then national average and then Dallas. So, just to give you an idea of what you're looking at and then I believe the crude oil prices in there too. So, gas is one piece of it, but petroleum-based items, we deal with a lot. So, pipes, chemicals, all of those things are driven by fuel prices. So, we saw anywhere from 15% to 40% on various petroleum-based items last year. We're still seeing increases in those items, but not like we were. We're seeing a lot of leveling, which I would hope so because we can't continue 40% and then 40 more percent or 40% and then 20 more percent. So, we're really just keeping a close eye on things like meters, pipes that we're putting in the ground and things that have a high dollar value already before those kind of inflation. And we saw that as we worked through the '23 budget quite a bit. Other things we look at, the Fed rate, I bring that to you every month. I'm reading on several different sources in the last few days that they're now discussing maybe slowing the increases. So, I was really expecting maybe two more jumps, but they're saying that now spending has reduced, which we know it has. You can look at the markets, the consumer rates are really driving down borrowed money. So, that was part of the process they were trying to do there. For a long time, money was essentially free. So, a lot of people were going into big debt and, you know, the inflation rate went crazy. And so, now with supply shortages and everything else, the Fed just said, we're going to, we're going to get control of this. And so, unfortunately, one of the few ways that they can get control of it is to increase the rate so that money costs more. So, so this is just an overall look at that. Texas unemployment rate, at this point, they're saying is back to pre-pandemic levels, keeping in mind that that employment, unemployment rate only relates to people who are looking for a job. So, subjective information, but still a good tool to know what's going on out there as far as what's driving sales tax and those kind of things. This is just inflationary pieces. You guys saw some of this within your budget, just looking at multi-years of inflation. You know, it looks really big until you really start looking back over history and there's actually been some larger interest rates than we're seeing right now. But when we're looking at, you know, ambulances being almost $100,000 more than they were a year and a half ago, those are big-ticket items that we have to consider. When we had this great 10-year rolling stock plan and then all of a sudden, we're buying an ambulance every year, but we're spending an extra $100, $150,000 than we were before. And simple things like computers, you know, you don't think a, you know, a couple hundred dollars makes a big difference, but when you're buying 1,000 computers, it does make a big difference. And so, we really get back into the want-need conversation and start saying, okay, well, prices are going up here, so what are we going to do to maintain operations at X level? And what does that mean as an overall revenue stream need and those kind of things, so. And this is just a look, you know, like we were just talking about is kind of how is our budget broken up? What are our biggest expenses? We know that personnel is our largest expense, citywide, almost 31%. So, 52% of all personnel is public safety and we've talked about that. And that is, I mean, it's a priority in our community, it's a priority in every community, specifically now with the pressures that they're feeling politically and otherwise and just having a lot harder time putting people in those positions. So, you know, when you look at it like this, what we're monitoring for every month is, okay, this is how it's budgeted, is this is how it lining up? And if it isn't lining up like that, then we're starting to look at our revenues short. If they are, is someone not paying something they should have paid? Or are they high? Does someone pay something early? So, we don't want to count on that being excess until we know what's really driving that. So, we spend a lot of time just picking through individual-type things. I was going to skip that one, it's y'all's favorite. So, paying debt, we kind of built this chart out last year, which I really like because debt can be super hard to understand. So, I like the little box to the left because it basically tells you what debt belongs to who and how it's getting paid for. Okay, so remember that the green is all property tax-supported debt or general fund debt. The blue is water fund debt and that is all supported by business-type revenues. And then, the red is EIC debt. So, those are projects that EIC has incurred debt for that is backed by property tax just for the rate, but it has no impact on our capacity for the general fund. It's kind of like cosigning on a loan, I guess, is the best way to describe it. You can do things like revenue bonds within EIC as well. They don't have to be just certificates of obligation or general obligation bond. So, you can get away from the property tax-backed situation by using a revenue bond if, you know, that, there were a need for that. Although, the restricted reserve fund that we talked about having to implement for the water fund, it's not optional in an EIC fund. So, if we ever were to do that, then.
You say EIC is backed by property tax or sales tax?
Well, they're paid for by sales tax. But when we do a certificate of obligation, for example, when we have done them in the past, they use our property tax evaluation as part of their capacity analysis and that keeps them from having to do a set aside of restricted dollars or reserve fund to pay their debt if we were to do it revenue bond style like we did the water fund. So, we have some options there, but what we have currently, it's paid for by sales tax through EIC. General fund has never touched it and there's no reason for us ever to have to pay for it. But to get a better rate, we used our property tax as a co-sign, I guess, for lack of a better word. But you have multiple options with EIC and water fund. General fund's a little bit different because anything we do there is going to be property tax-backed. Okay, and like I said, more to come on asset replacement. This is just a picture of what we did within the budget this year. We do have a heavy focus on our long-range planning right now and we've done a whole lot of work on that in the last several months. We really started that in October. Everyone was super excited when I put that budget team meeting on the calendar, like October 16th. I got lots of nice replies back to that. But it's been a really good process and we've had some great information brought in. But we've got a team of about 13 or 14 people that have really gone out and done a lot of work on, what do we own, what do we need to address and what's the high needs? What do we need to do now? What's an emergency versus what does this look like in three years? And then, what do we buy right now and when do we need to replace that? Instead of waiting and saying, okay, well, in three years, we're going to need to do this. No, we need to do this in 10 and so let's go ahead and make that part of our plan. And so, that's what we've really been working on. Larger-dollar expenditures go here, kind of use $10,000 as a benchmark because that's where we capitalize things. So, if we buy an item, a mower, for example, and it's $11,000, we're going to depreciate that. If we buy a mower that's $8,000, we're not, it's just a supply. And so, from an accounting standpoint, we just drew that same line and said, that makes sense because that's how we do it on financial accounting. So, we're going to use that same threshold to determine what gets paid for out of this fund. So, the other idea with that is really leveling our operational funds and saying, okay, any of these things that are going to create variations year-over-year in our budget, we're going to put those over here because then we can really see those, identify those. So, the idea is your operational budget should maintain somewhat of normalcy. You know, it's going to fluctuate with things that we can't control and it's going to fluctuate naturally with salary increases and increases in big things like group health and those things. But operationally, we want to see somewhat of a line. We don't want to see, you know, hips and valleys. That's what this fund is for. And so, that's what we're going to be bringing to you and talking to you a whole lot more about over the next. I would say it's going to take us another couple of years to really get, okay, we're solid, but we are so much better right now than we have been since I've been here. Other funds, so every other fund that we have, we have 26 funds that we budget for in the city. They all have different rules. The general fund and the water fund must be balanced. So, I use a magic number of zero all the time when I'm talking to our executive team and just tell them, remember it's zero. So, we don't have a choice in those. So, whatever we have to do to get to zero is what we have to do. We still want to take care of the needs of the citizens. We want to provide the services that are requested of us and that, you know, are required for health and safety, of course, first. But then after that, we've got to get to zero. So, we do have restrictions on other funds too. So, you know, our PEG fund, for example, that's got, our money comes from technology-based franchise fee, so we can only use that fund expenditures to pay for technology-based things like this, these new up fittings and, you know, anything that might be specifically related to technology. Parkland dedication, that revenue is from new development and all of that revenue has to be used to improve or grow green space that's used by our citizens to offset development that's now taken up property that didn't, that was green space before. Police and Fire have a special revenue and there's some state funding that goes into there. Most of their grants and donations go into that fund and because those are all restricted items that we can only spend on those areas, so it's a lot easier for us if we keep them separate. The nice thing about some of these special funds is that at year-end, fund balance rolls back into fund balance. So, revenues over expenses or expenses over revenues, whatever it is, whether we have a loss or we have a gain, it rolls back into fund balance for use. So, where the general fund, that's why we have to bring you a budget amendment because if we don't spend something that we should have spent, then it rolls into fund balance. To get it back out of fund balance requires a budget amendment. This is, most of these funds aren't like that because revenues and expenses are very unexpected. We don't always know when we're going to get a grant, so we can't budget for that. So, we don't, you know, so different rules on these, but very restricted is what we can use them for. Library endowment, another good example. So, we, this fund started in 1986 by someone who died and left their estate to the library, only they left it in form of an endowment. So, it has to be maintained 100% separate. The corpus or the original amount that was given to that fund has to always remain, so we can't touch that at all, we can only use the investment. So, that one's invested a little bit differently. You kind of see some net loss, some net gain in that just because it's invested differently than our other funds are. And you remember a few years ago, we came back and revised the investment policy for that fund, so. Anyway, so there's a lot of different, literal different nuances that have to happen. It seems like a lot, it's really not when you break it down into small pieces that are easily digestible. You know, for us, we want to rename our department, we haven't come up with a good name yet, we want to rename it. Just because of the nature of all the different hats that we wear and what we have to do. But it's very interesting to really dig into these different areas and look at the detail. But I don't feel like we ever bring you the detail and you don't have the time to digest the details. So, if there's ever detailed questions you want to ask, just let us know. We're happy to dig into that for you, but, you know, have the confidence that we've definitely done our homework and our departments are doing more homework than we are on their individual departments and really knowing what they need out there. So, CIP, of course, long-term estimates, multi-year plans for that. Whenever you budget for a public safety facility, you can't not allocate the funds for that the next year. So, that's why we keep those a little bit separate, in separate funds. Once that money's allocated, it's allocated year-over-year because it's going to take multiple years to finish a project like that. And then, component unit funds, of course, that's EIC, TERS, K-Pub, airport, all those kind of things that we also, so our department creates the budget for TERS and EIC with their help and through some workshop items to bring back to you guys for approval. So, I'm happy to take any questions if anybody has. I know that's a lot of information in a hurry and there's a lot more I could tell you, but that's keeping it as simple as I can.
What's a PEG fund?
PEG fund is, it's technology-based. So, for example, Charter Communications, I just used that one because we just received a check from them. They have infrastructure within our grounds, so they pay a franchise fees just like every other one. But a portion of the money that's related to cable, television, Trina, there's another component, it's cable and television and something else, there's three components. But internet, I think, that is related to those, that money has to be set aside and then can only be spent on technology. And then, there's another piece that goes to the general fund that doesn't have that restriction. So, there's two components of what they pay for, the regular franchise fee and then the PEG portion. Education. Okay, thank you. I knew there was another component. So, it can only be spent on very specific things. So, that, we keep that in a completely separate fund. So, if we don't spend it, it just rolls back into its own fund balance and then we can spend it again. Same rule with like child safety fund, municipal court, those kind of things that we have to keep very tight and restricted.
You know, I can't even imagine how hard it is for you to estimate costs on some of the supplies that you need. I mean, I know in the, you know, in my world, there are, there are costs for wants and there are costs for needs. And I'm not seeing, like, say, for instance, you want to buy a ticket to the theater. That hasn't doubled in price, that's a want. If you want to go to the theater, you're going to pay for a ticket. I have not seen those prices double, but yet I've seen the price of toothpaste or dog food or something like that. Those are the things that are doubling in price and I can't even imagine what you guys are trying to estimate now based on the fact that they seem to be deliberately inflating the prices of things they know we need and not necessarily just things that we want.
We're seeing a lot on the shipping side too. So, for example, I looked at chlorine just not long ago and 2,000-pound chlorine, I don't know what that looks like, Stuart probably does. Looking at this year to last year is like almost $2,000 difference on the same product that didn't have shipping last year and it's doubled in price and now they're shipping on top of it. So, we're really having to dig into those vendors and say, okay. And that's where we rely on departments because they see those individual invoices, they put them in to be paid. And so, they know and they're tracking and so they're putting a lot of notes in their budget to say, okay, I know this is up, but this is why. And they can narrow it back down to, we're seeing shipping costs we've never seen. X has gone up 30%. We anticipate this project coming on next year, so we're going to use this many more chemicals because we're going to have this much more water, or whatever the situation is. But they give us that level of detail so that we can.
But then you're also predicting what's going to happen for the following year.
It's a guess. And if you remember back in, when we were budgeting for '23 and we were saying, you know, we're going to see 30% increases on anything petroleum-based. We did for about a three-to-four-month window there, but by the time we got into that first quarter of '23, it kind of started leveling just a little bit, particularly on fuel. You know, we saw that drop dramatically. I mean, what we budgeted last year compared to what we're proposing for '24, dramatically different with fuel. So, it's really just, you have to watch. But you're right, this product can go up and this product doesn't. And so, you can't just apply a X percent across the board, it just won't work like that.
I mean, you can't help but think that there's a little bit of deliberation, you know, there because it's the, it's the needs that are doubling in price and not the wants.
Yeah, it's the needs and the suppliers are seeing it too. And I think that's part of the problem is you have supply chain shortages, so they're going to pay more for it to get that product to them so that they can turn it around and push it out to retailers or whomever. So, they're seeing increases on their side too. So, it's a shared cost kind of situation, unfortunately. It's been tough.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other comments, Countem?
I just want to compliment you. You guys do an outstanding job. Transparency, you can never be accused of not being completely transparent. It's complicated, it's complex and I just, I applaud your whole staff and I applaud the rest of the staff for, for working with you the way they work with you and.
They do a great job. We couldn't get where we get to bring it to you without the detail that they put into it. That's why I wanted to show you that detailed report because there's, that's just two account numbers. And so, a typical department page, water production will have 40 pages to their budget report with that level of detail. So, we definitely need that and appreciate that to be able to help us do our jobs, so.
This thing is great too.
Oh, good, thank you. We want to do that for budget, it'll just be a matter of time.
Yes.
But that's what we would like to do. I think it's a lot more user-friendly than, you know, you can go to the detail if you want the detail.
And it's something you can hand somebody and say, here it is. And then, and your door's always open for questions, right? From anybody and everybody.
Of course.
Thank you.
Thank you.